Guys, I guess it's past time. We got a warm beer, so we gonna call this meeting over. And we gonna ask Keith, we will, he's gonna work prayer.
Alright, you bow with, bow with Clay?
Good Lord, thank you for this day and beautiful way they've given us today. Watch our own goddesses. We continue to go through this week. Keep us safe. Thank you for everybody here tonight, their interest in our city. Thank you for each board member and member of our city staff that serves as citizens of this town. Be with us and goddesses, we go through the remainder of this week, live a life that be pleasing to you.
Amen, thank you Keith. Alright, first thing on the agenda is a public game for fiscal year 2025. If I have anything, talk to me about it. And we're gonna let y'all drop next, but first of all, the next year, if anybody has anything to say. Alright, if not, we gonna let John Rogers come up first, looks like. You gonna lead it off and lead it off.
Alright, somehow, some way, I got on this historic preservation. I think y'all put me on, to be honest. Yeah, so, everybody's familiar with historic preservation. It's come to the board members' attention that although, I think it's been since 2007, that we've had historic preservation, city's never even adopted a map. So, we don't really have, you got it, but you don't have your teeth right now. You gotta have a map. We do have an ordinance in place, but there's gonna be some tweaks that probably need to be made to yet. So, I'm not coming here today, really, to talk to you about the ordinance. That's something we can come back to later. But I am coming to asking for the board to adopt the map that the Historic Preservation Board wants you to adopt, which is simply the map Mississippi Department of Archives of History has already designated. So, I've got y'all copies here. Got five, if y'all wanna pass those around. This is off of their website, and I'll let Reagan look at it. Or you let Tim look at it, if you want to, because I don't think I brought it. We keep one. So, basically, this is the map that the Department of Archives of History has on their website, sort of a designated area, my opinion. And I don't necessarily speak for the board, but I certainly think that there are gonna be some additional areas that we're gonna come back to y'all about and discuss. But this is going to cover Main, Bankhead, also known as Main Street, because it's the main drag in town. But Bankhead from the bridge or the road that runs under, and forgive me for the name, I don't remember what it's called, where it goes to Riddle, but straight up through the heart of Bankhead, all the way until you get to Camp Street. So, this would encompass the downtown buildings, the ones on Railroad Avenue, and everything straight up Bankhead to the old post office and the courthouse. Now, you actually will see some dots on these maps. I found it interesting that apparently my building is designated as historic building by the Mississippi Department of Archives, and I didn't know that. I mean, I know my building was a gas station in 1950s, but I had no clue. So, anyway, but this, the purpose of this map would be so that the preservation committee and then the board would be able to control renovations, buildings, things of that nature in that area. Everybody here's been to Oxford, y'all are aware of how they operate with some of their historic buildings. One of the reasons that we feel that this is necessary is there's been, as y'all know, I mean, it's been really good for New Albany, but we've had a lot of buildings downtown that have changed ownerships, and people have done things to them, and they, and some of those additions are great. What we don't want is to have additions or renovations or reconstructions, buildings that might differ from what the purpose of the historic preservation area would be. Right now, I think there is a particular owner that is interested in adding a balcony, and so that would be something that thus far, people have just added balconies as long as they go and see Eric, and Eric says, "Yep, that meets the building code", and they can do basically anything they want to, am I right, Eric? So, with the, with the map and some of the regulations that would be afforded with the preservation, then not only would they have to satisfy Eric and the building requirements, but they'd also have to satisfy things such as aesthetics and qualities that we would look at that apply to the buildings. So, you know, look, people, I don't have to tell y'all, you know, but I get calls all the time, people stop by the office, they love New Albany's downtown, we've done a great job, and, you know, we have a board for a reason. This was enacted 17 years ago, I think. And for one reason or another, it's been there, but it's not really played much of a role. And so, why do you have something if it's, if it's not gonna do anything? But again, you know, at this point in time, it wouldn't seem to me that the proposed map to be adopted is controversial. It's basically the area that everybody knows anyway, it's sort of the historic preservation area. And as we move along, and we'll come back to y'all, and maybe after you expand this, you'll note that Main Street is actually not within this proposed map. And that may be something that needs to, some of Main Street is not. And that may be an area that, you know, we wanna come back and talk to y'all about at some point in time, being that it's adjacent to the area, and it's right there in the heart of it, essentially. So, do y'all really have any questions about it, about the map itself or the areas?
I mean, we have adopted, Bill Jean presented this, adopted the map.
I thought it was a year ago.
We have a map. There've been two different, more changes.
Because I think the change added most of Main Street to it.
Was it a map or the actual name, that we have a historic district?
It was a district. It was about the, I don't remember a map, but I remember like the survey going by the street.
So, my understanding is there has been some conversations about that, it's been before y'all. But based upon our recent meeting with some planners, one or two from Oxford, we don't have a map. We may have an area.
It's the historic district, but there's not a map attached to it. It's kind of what it is.
But is it described, is it described street by street?
The one in 2007 does, let me know.
Yeah, but we did one just last year, we brought it. We even said something about, we already have this one, we don't have that.
Maybe that was for the survey?
So, if you wanna prove it, I would suggest they make a motion to prove it, initiative on the fact that it's not already there for the past, we can figure that out.
No, and I'm totally, I mean, that's great, I agree. And I would also say, to the extent that this district is more expansive than this map, then, you know, we could submit a map at a future meeting. I think that the reason there's a little urgency here is because of some things that owners of buildings are wanting to do right now. And so, we wanted to at least have a map so that people can say, "I own a building, and is it in or outside?" And so, with a little research, Reagan, on if y'all have approved one, and also what the legal description of the historic district is. And I think we could fix all of that by your next meeting.
Well, since this is a visiting month, we're not gonna finish this meeting today, so we can just make that vote once we know.
Yeah, when do you think, do y'all know when your next meeting is? Fifteen? We could be back here on the 15th, because sure. Again, this is, you know, sort of the duty that we were tasked with, and we're just trying to move forward, move on forward.
I don't know if we require a vote, if we get a district and we just need a map. We've just got a description, and you just look at the map.
If this is a description, you may not, but there's something of harm in saying, not the map, but go along with the district.
And just, it will change, because we just got through with a re-survey, the South Side Survey, that included, that includes Main Street. So, it will change.
But we have intention, all intentions have come, you know, making sure Main Street's included. But this is what, at least, is something that we have the Department of Archives put out there. And it would be, I guess, less restrictive than maybe what we come back with later.
But you recommend we can put it to a vote, intended as long as we haven't already.
I'd like to adopt, but today, I would just say we deserve it.
Okay, so take it under advisement, till 15th.
Yeah, no way.
Yeah, I don't think that there, I don't think there are any other matters, at least from the historic preservation for today. I do anticipate that we'll probably try to get back on y'all's October doc, get to talk about the ordinance language and some of the things. Specifically, who can be board members on the historic committee, some things like that, whether you're an owner, a citizen, resident, business, required, or whatever you wanna call it. We've got some ideas about that, people that are affected by it. Anyway, we'll come back before y'all leave. Thank y'all.
Alright, Amy.
I'm Shiva Masters.
Shiva, okay.
Thank you, I'm Shiva Masters. Thank you for your time this evening. We, the Zesty Seniors of New Albany, would like to petition the mayor and the elected officials of New Albany to partner with Union County officials and address the special needs of the senior citizens that make up 20% of the population of New Albany and Union County, to include a program through the Parks and Recreation Commission under the leadership of Chase Jeter, to create a holistic client approach for senior citizens 55 and plus. With New Albany being recognized as a certified retirement community, we're asking that two city and two county officials make arrangements to go and check out the multipurpose buildings on Collin Road in Chippelo to find out how they're funded and how we in Union County can be funded as well, including transportation for citizens to and from the facility. We also ask the city and county officials to work together on bettering the community with the multipurpose facility that can accommodate multiple activities at one time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, let's move to the apartment building, yes, I would say.
No, I'm just gonna let her do the speaking.
Alright, move down to the apartment building. They don't like to square. Mayor, board, we got some deals to pay tonight. First three are all the communication system. The first was a pay request, outlet, dent engineering, an amount of $66,143.22. That's for design and construction management services during the month of August. I got much of my way of saying, Kevin Dale, any other questions, Lewis, all in favor? Then the second item is for material associated with the communication system project. Urban utility services, they want the contractors to follow material points project, it's an amount of $344,548.16. I was a little worried, much of my dream, I would say. Say, Keith, any other questions, Lewis, all in favor? Any of the, of the curious? Then the third item is to our construction contract on the communication project. We have two pay requests, we have one last one, this is second, very pay request. Pay request number two is for what we call our North Haven Core Area. This basically ran all the way from Blue Mountain, that North Haven Substation, that the Greater Cotton Plant Area, that we went through. That's $531,560.34. And then the third pay application, we call that New Albany Five, that's actually the North Side New Albany over here. That was $121,523.81. Much of my Kevin Dale, I would say. Any other questions, Lewis, all in favor? Then the last one's a new hire request, we had a dispatcher that resigned about a month ago. We'd like to offer the job to Sean Thompson. I have talked with Chief Robertson, who's not here tonight, he was the one who paid for the hire. He would like to hire him for a dispatch job, Sean Thompson. Alright, what's my will, what's my dream, say, and Keith? Any other questions, Lewis, all in favor? Any of the, what's the curious? Then I did a mail copy, or Franky, send a Franky, Franky mail copy, to the budget, terrified to be after discussing, y'all, in the next several days. Alright, thank you.
Wait to be announced.
Item number one is a request for approval to, for pay applications from APAC Mississippi. This is pay application number one for the Phase One paving, that's completed in the amount of $880,134.96.
Much of my Kevin Dale, I would say. Any other questions, Lewis, all in favor? Any of the, what's the curious?
Item number two is a request for the board's approval to execute a contract, a construction contract for the exterior renovation of the new court building, not to exceed $75,000.
We have.
That worked good, what's?
But we've got, it's under $75,000 threshold. We've got one quote, so we, I know that it would be under. I just don't like the second quote, so we're here.
I mean, you're asking to approve the lowest.
That's right.
What was under said, $75,000?
Given that we don't have the quote, the only thing here, just because the community is hard to take, of the, of life, we maybe come back, it's, it's what the, it's what that, I mean.
Will, what, I'm there. Much of my dream, I would say.
What are we, what are we, what are we setting?
Well, to prove the lowest of two bids for the exterior of the Mrs. Court. They have one, but they don't have the second, and they ask to be approved, which I want them to know.
Well, I just said it to him, like, come back.
Come back, emergency purchases, and just, yeah, let the public know who won the bid and how much.
Okay, second part, any other questions, Lewis, all in favor? Any of the, what's the curious? Alright, sir. Media Development, you don't have anything? Museum deal, you have? You got the mother book? Uh, please, what? Play you had a notebook.
Yeah, I got a notebook, therefore. Two items, the first item is request for approval on a tuition reimbursement program that would reimburse certified full-time officers up to $2,000 a year for qualified student loans.
So, y'all talked about that and kind of gave a general approval of it. I don't know that I'm asking you to approve an actual contract today, because we don't have a person that, that, to have somebody, they'll have to come back. But I think that the PD would like a general approval to start offering that. What it does is it offers up to $10,000 for five years, thousand a year. What they have, do it at the end of the year, or what they have paid, or a combination of what they have paid that year. It's who, has to be, you know, a loan on the program that was some, a policy that the, that's geared towards. So, basically, whenever.
Did we ever decide how long they have to work for this?
Well, they have to, they get paid at the end of the year, so it's five years.
Okay.
Yeah, and they only, yeah. So, basically, if you have a contract, we'll have it at the beginning of their. Chris will ask you to offer that too, then you offer it. So, you have to prove it on a personal basis.
So, today, we're just approving that the PD will offer that program?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the contract is ready. I don't know that we have to have a vote today. I think Chris just wants to know if he can go, try and find it, help find it.
And Clay, Chris talked about having that, creating opportunities for you to recruit.
Yes.
You still agree with that, that that's, any of the four?
Yes.
It's a bit different than what all the brands did. What they were doing was paying for all the old ones. This one paid for school loans, as long as the school was, was in a program.
Mayor, in the policy, it does state, must be 2012 months.
Yep. So. We did have that in, you got that in writing?
I've got a, I've got a policy that.
I have, yeah, if you want to read it.
So, we pay them at the end of the year.
At the end of the year. Like on their one anniversary, they're eligible for the, for $2,000 for that year.
Have to sign up before, can't ask. So, what we, you need anything approved tonight?
I really don't, basically. Talk about getting that ready, it's ready. If y'all are happy with it, Chris will offer it. You want more time to read it, we can talk about that. You bring your advisor as well.
Y'all send that to us, and then we can, maybe press it when we, we talk about it.
Second, School Resource Officer, Officer Mo U.
Yeah, that one, that one was a long one. While the school has now approved it, and approved it, ready to send it to the G's offices. Those are, won't be official until they approve it, have to prove it. School's already done, and that we have to. Ready to go. I asked questions about it, but I don't know, I think you basically, about officers, certain things, they provide expense wise.
Few, one other.
Training, their fuels, all of that, we provide on the car, and build them for their, after their age, as long as they pay us as an SRO of school. If we have to work on the side separately, that's on us, or our benefit. So, it's just the same as last year, do you agree? Well, this is the first time we've had a written signed agreement, that we've been operating under this, I think.
I think the big question was half, right on the level. And they got confused this year, when they had over 180 days. Because that's how long schools live.
That's just because they had to do super generally, they didn't understand.
But he did say, I already said, we're gonna pay our ass. So, do we have a copy of the agreement, or is it yours?
No, I have, I have a copy of their signature, plus I have the agreement here. I can send that to you too, it's very long.
Well, I mean, I.
I'll send it to you.
Alright, thank you. Park Ray, mid lane case.
I would, I emailed my board, because I got some questions.
Alright, fire report.
I sent the report, and what I needed, need the approval to promote Heather Burns from Park Island Drive, effective tonight. It's Heath replaced in Ethan that went part-time.
Much of my will say, much of my dream, any other questions, Lewis? All in favor? Any of the, what's the curious?
Alright, I need approval to replace the heating and air unit at Station Two with the whole portion of the building, it's a 1996 model, it's older than most of our fire funds. I hate to say that, but it's true. But it's, it's very inefficient, and we're having trouble out of it. It's not gonna make it another summer. This is inside-outside unit, and the overall quote for the inside-outside unit for the three ton with advanced heating and air is $4,127.50. We'll pay for it, because it's a capital improvement with our fire fund.
Much of my will, same with Kevin Dale, any other questions? All in favor? Any of the?
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Great part, Johnny, you anything? Building respect there, you always got something. You got a real whip, you always got something.
Not that, man.
A lot cheaper when you're up.
I emailed both of the board, we had a request from Real Life Church on Highway 348 for a variance, and a light, and the sign of light requirements, it was denied. And they would like to appeal that decision, we got them on October the 1st.
Need a vote to settle. Alright, we gotta go set the appeal. Much of my will, who want to make a change, Park, any other questions, Lewis? All in favor? Any of the?
A request from Jim Browning for a subdivision approval, of a subdivision of land on the west side of Moss Hill Drive on 1300 block, it was approved.
Is it on down, Moss Hill?
Yeah, if you go through the full lane, you know, it's, we got there, but before you get to Tell me, what's that? He just split four lots off us right on the road, just to sell. And then you got one more, we laid the copy of the W Gate subdivision right there. There's an old one and a new one, so you see the new one has the lots in front of Dr. Bronn that he requested.
What you want us to do?
Just to look at some of those.
Much of my Kevin Dale, I would say. Keith, any other questions?
I got one, so the main thing was the road, where Dr. Bronn is, and the road is that? Yes, and a few of our guys mentioned in the meeting that I would move it. I said in the meeting, I believe, between 15 and 16 is where it would be, and that's where it wound up being, so. There's a 70-foot right of way that you see between lots 15 and 16 that moved the roadway to that location instead of in the location of what is labeled as 807.
Was that, was that kind of a road or something already?
It, well, it was close to a gravel entrance. I just basically moved the roadway to access to here, the property from, instead of going through what's labeled as lot 807, or address 807. Instead of coming through there, I moved it in between those lots that I had stated I would open in between. Which should put to where that road empties out on Box for Loop, not across from his property at all.
Yeah, I want to think, look, that gravel entrance was a long, it was a long way from his drive.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it's just his side of that gravel, but it was in between 15, or I think it's 15 and 16. Yeah, it's in between 15 and 16, where I originally had it, had it going, or going through lot 17 only and stopping there. And then that other Phase Two flat would fill that other entrances. Now, instead of coming out of 807, where it's shown.
Get the elbow. Fourth side of any road, or?
Yeah. And I'm keeping, I'm maintaining the same estate square footage requirements as the other lots, as far as the deed restrictions, so. It will be like those other lots that were 2,000 square foot minimums, those will be 2,000 square foot minimums. It did make me have to extend some sewer in Phase One instead of waiting for Phase Two, so that I can service those. But that, that's something I could take care of from. And I told Eric today, that's, that's the plan, we do have to, I found out two days ago, we're gonna need to extend the sewer, once we got this plan done, so. I'll be getting Eric the extension, he's got the plans on the sewer that terminate a certain location. We're gonna fly in with additional engineered plans to go from that termination to where it's got to. to where it's got to now, since we've made this change. I just wanted to make sure y'all approve the change before I spend the engineering money on the, on the extension sewer.
All right, what's my will? You got most of the key, have a second?
Sure.
Right right now. Oh, yeah, it was in discussion. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? I'm curious.
Thank you.
He like that part of that. All right, he, uh, contend agenda, nothing on update agenda, but in case, unless anybody get anything on the consumer agenda, we'll go down to the action. So I don't know if they're gonna storm, so I'll get somebody else. Oh, well, we met with, um, John Ward, used, uh, last week or whenever, it was, we brought it up about it. He's supposed to be.
Along with a multipurpose, possibly a multipurpose, so.
He's looking.
For money for that.
Yeah, it'll be nice. We try. Okay, uh, I'm B is except for citizen, they wait for 24, 25. Y'all seen that? What's my will, I was saying, taking the key? Any other questions, I was thinking, all in favor?
Aye.
Most curious. And now C is except tax levy for 24, 25. What's my key saying, I will, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, most curious. Unless anybody get anything else? I'm letting most of the turn.